The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the town council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. We're beginning at 7:00 PM. I'll please ask you to stand for the pledge. Councilwoman Maranti will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I welcome you, and I would like to take a moment of silence in memory of Nolan DeRozier, middle school student who recently passed. If you'd please take a moment. Thank you, and our sincere condolences, of course, we send to Nolan's family. Moving along with our council meeting, we have, we do not have any presentations tonight, nor do we have a public hearing, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to accept the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports. Do we have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did attend the Library Board of Trustees last week for their monthly meeting. Just a couple of quick updates. They had a couple of budget updates. They did approve the overall budget back at their January meeting, and they are going through the whole policy book, as I've mentioned before, and the ones that they worked on last week were in regard to donations, gifts, and exhibits. And, you know, those are important policies for libraries. And they also discussed some upcoming, some proposed state legislation on the price of eBooks, which libraries are charged. And there's been quite a bit of concern about the price that the publishers charge for these, and so the local library board was, you know, did discuss the upcoming state legislation that's been proposed and possibly supporting that, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Rosemary. Anybody else have anything to report? I'll just give you a quick update on the Committee on Aging. They met on February 9th. They are sponsoring an income tax preparation event. This is, the appointments are done by AARP volunteers. They partner with HRA, which is a commission based, and I believe it's in New Britain. So they do offer help preparing income taxes. They are almost filled, so that's a very popular event that takes place every year at the Senior Center. Senior Center is also sponsoring a COVID clinic by Wheeler. The date is March 20th from 9:30 to 12, and April 10th from 9:30 to 12. Walk-ins are welcome. You do not need to make an appointment to attend those two clinics. The mammography van will be at the Senior Center, April 4th. Anybody over 40 and has not had a mammogram in over a year is certainly welcome to participate in that. The Senior Center also had an update from Stephanie Susi, who is a social worker. She is an incredibly busy person at the Center. She's seen over the past year 791 clients for a variety of concerns and issues. There in the Senior Center is a, it is certainly a resource for folks that need those kinds of assistance. So she gave an update, and it was good to hear about what's going on with her. Representative Cooley and Senator Martin will be visiting the Senior Center on March 20th at 9:30. They're going to be speaking about programs of interest that are being spoken about at the state level, so they will be there. There's planned a volunteer dinner for Monday, February, let me get that back. There's a volunteer dinner Monday, February 13th from 10 to 12. They also reported on interesting statistic, which I thought was kind of nice to hear about. The membership at the Senior Center has increased 54% over last year. However, they are not yet back to their COVID membership numbers, so folks still haven't all returned to the services that the Senior Center provides since COVID, but people are gradually coming back, and that's always a good thing. They have a number of programs. They can offer assistance in a variety of needs that our senior community requires, so they are a very active group. So that is, that's my report for the Committee on Aging. If there are no other reports tonight, we'll move along to appointments and resignations. We have a few. We have two.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, motion to ratify the town manager's acceptance with regret of the resignation of Eileen Ayala from the Conservation Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of Andrew de Gregorio to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight that were not on our agenda? Okay. Board of Education, do we have a report tonight?
Do I need to do my name and address?
Can you speak into the mic?
Do I need to do my name and address, or no?
I wonder, say it again.
Name and address, Lori Consalvo.
Just your name. It's good. We don't need your address. We know.
Okay, just wasn't sure.
Your name.
Good evening, everyone. The month of February has been very busy finalizing budget details. Our last meeting was February 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Roberta Loria was sworn in Monday afternoon with town clerk Cindy Perini, and we had a new vice chair that was nominated. Nomination was by Cassandra Clark for Rachel Buchanan for the vice chair of Plainville Board of Education. There were no other nominations, and Roberta Loria seconded the motion. We, the board recognized and thanked Mrs. Deborah Hardy for her 12 years of service to the Board of Education, and thanked her for every, everything that she did for our town. We also had another motion made by Foster White to approve the minutes of January 9th, 17th, 19th, 24th, and 31st. Our board unanimously passed Mr. LaPage's budget with a 4.75 increase over the current budget. Mr. LaPage will present our Board of Education approved budget to the town council for their review on March 6th, with public hearing to follow on March 9th, and will have the public vote on April 25th. We have been utilizing Assern ARPA fund, grant funds for a number of small, medium, and large-scale projects around the district. On Monday evening, our Finance and Facilities Subcommittee of the Board of our team proposed three large projects, which included a full upgrade of the PHS pool and nittorium with new bleachers that are ADA compliant, full walls, and ceiling paint upgrade in the PCS brand colors with special enamel paint, and also replacement of all the drains and surrounding tiles with Plainville Blue surrounds and stainless steel drains to address heavy heaving and drainage issues. Not to exceed the cost of this project is $120,000. We are moving forward with plans to install a new HVAC system with air conditioning in the MSP Gymnasium, which requires a number of additional upgrades and considerations for that installation. There are not to exceed the amount of the project is $350,000. And although, and although Mr. LaPage does continue to work toward a full renovation or plan to complete as much as we can at MSP, depending on what the council ultimately decides, we want to act quickly on this project so we can cool the gym upcoming, for the upcoming warm months. Kevin Ross and his team will be upgrading all classrooms and instructional spaces at MSP with 75-inch interactive touchscreen monitors on carts that will have incredible instructional use and capabilities. And then lastly, we had five PHS students, along with Food Services Director Ashley Carl, Jenny Lorenzo, Carl Johnson, and Sam Adlerstein celebrate with students for their efforts with the group, supported by TJ Ricardo and Lynn Davis, and filmed and edited in the course of less than one day by Todd Helming. They shared personal stories and testimony about the importance of free meals for all, for all to them, for all of them, and their stories were powerful. Their video was shared as testimony early last week and was hugely instrumental in the unanimous decision to extend free meals for all students in Connecticut through the end of this year. These students were also asked to meet with Governor Lamont on this coming Wednesday, along with Mrs. Carl and Ms. DeLorenzo. They will then testify at the hearing on this topic for continued freed meals next Thursday. We are very proud of these students. And our next Board of Education meeting will be on March 13th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I do not.
Okay, thank you for being here. Report of the town manager, Michael.
Good evening. Thank you. First up item is the RACE grant discussion, and I'd like to introduce Rob Alois from the Capital Region Council of Governments. Rob has colleague Mark Jewell, who's going to be joining virtually as well. But this is, as you see in my notes, a grant award for the alignment or a new trail opportunity for an east-west alignment to connect Plainville with New Britain. And I'm going to allow, turn it over to Rob to walk us through the, sort of the nuts and bolts of that. It's a $16 million grant that is funded by the feds through the state and will cover the cost for the construct, design and construction. But I don't want to misspeak or steal any thunder from, from Rob. He's really the point person helping us through this. The CROG is taking the lead, which helps a town like Plainville because we don't necessarily have the resources and design team and engineering to have the capacity to oversee a project of this magnitude. So it's great to have a partnership with the Council of Governments and to have their support and their assistance with this. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over and welcome Rob. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Once again, I'm Rob Alois. I'm with, I'm the director of planning with Capital Region Council of Governments. Online, I have Mark Jewell from, who's a senior planner at VHB. Will give a brief presentation to you all and answer any questions you might have. Basically, just a quick overview of what we're going to go over. We did receive a RACE grant. We applied and received a RACE grant with support of the town in New Britain. It is, it was for $16.4 million of federal funding for multi-use trails in New Britain and Plainville. Now, this emanated from a study that CROG did between 2016 and 2019 that studied both a connection of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, which, as you know, is in Farmington, and is also planned in Southington, and is built in part of Southington all the way down to New Haven, and also to connect that trail over to the CT Fast Track Trail. So that's the east-west connection that we just spoke about. Really, Condot started in 2020 to design the north-south Farmington Canal Heritage Trail alignment in-house, and they committed about, they had planned to commit about $13 million to that alignment and to construction of that trail. What this RACE grant application did, which we applied for last year, was leverage that state funds to create a mega project that also includes the east-west trail and applied for $16.4 million of additional funding for that package of projects. So, next slide, and I just went over this, oh, I got it here. I just went over introductions, and so what I'll do is I'll give a quick overview of the trail connections in the region and of the RACE grant award specifics, and then I'll turn it over to Mark online, who has COVID, so he's chosen to stay at home. I guess he's feeling okay. So he's going to help present with the overview of the past planning study. That's that 2016 to 2019 planning study I spoke about that had a lot of public involvement with the town, but I know a lot of you, a lot of the council has turned over since then. We have new staff members and everything else, so we thought it's important to get this in front of you, and then finally give you a draft timeline of the project and next steps and what we need from, from you guys in order to take those next steps in bringing this, this to completion. So first off, this is our CROG region. We represent the 38 towns around Hartford and the metro Hartford area. We are the Metropolitan Planning Agency, as designated by the federal government. So what that means is CROG, in addition to DOT, for this area here, has to approve all federal funding that happens for surface transportation in this region. So that not only means the roadways, the bridges, the transit system, but it also means bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, which is growing momentum throughout the region. As you can see from the map, there's many towns that have taken advantage of various federal funding opportunities that are targeted for this type of investment to build trails, and the state also has. So what we're starting to see is, is a network built of multi-use trails, so people could either, you know, travel to use it for transportation, for jobs, or to, to amenities in the region, or just for recreation. And so you're starting to see that, and of course, you know about the trails just north of here in Farmington and how much use those get, and people really enjoy them. So what this, this project focused on was the box in red on your screen, which is the Plainville New Britain area, and it looked at two of the major trails that are already constructed in the area. One is the trail on CT Fast Track, which has aspirations to go up into west Hartford and Hartford eventually, and the other, and that's over in New Britain, and the other is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, which also serves as a portion of the East Coast Greenway, which you can see in the light green line, which is a 3,000-mile trail that's envisioned, and people are working on all over the country, all over the East Coast, from Maine to Florida. So when that's complete, the goal is to have an off-road trail, mostly off-road, all the way from Maine to Florida, and it comes right through Plainville. So here is our RACE grant that we applied for. As you know, those connections don't exist right now in Plainville, but as you can see, the green solid lines are the completed trails on each, you know, triangle kind of around Plainville, and then parts of Southington, parts of New Britain, and Plainville are not constructed yet. Now, the RACE grant, the dashed lines indicate pieces of trail that are going to be constructed with other projects. The more earth color lines, the orange and the brown, are the RACE grant, what we applied for funding for. And we, like I said, we leveraged that funding that Condot had already sort of had on the books for some of this north-south alignment to get the 16.4. The federal government wants to see some local match, and that's what we used as the local match, the state funding. So this is completely state and federal funded. No town or municipal funding is, is needed. So we applied for the grant. Condot has determined that they will be the direct recipient, which is a good thing, meaning that they're going to commit design forces to do it. The town doesn't have to. New Britain is designing their portion in-house, but Condot will commit the resources to design it, and the total estimated cost is just over $30 million, and we received this award for $16.4 million from the federal government. As you can see, the state match is there. And then there are two caveats with this that come from the federal government. One is that design must be complete by September 2026, and construction must be complete by September 2031. And now for, for kind of the history of when this, of where the inception of this came from, on your screen you can see two, covers of two study documents that were performed by VHB back in 2018 and 19, and Mark will speak to that because he was heavily involved with the study back then, and he has all the details of the study. So, Mark, I'm not sure if we can hear you, but take it from here.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
A little bit.
Turn it up a little bit.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Rob. I just want to start by, it's been, it's been a few years since I've been in front of this esteemed panel, so I want to say hello and good to see you again, Chairwoman Pagliisi, and thank you to Town Manager Paul House and Assistant Town Manager Sirielli. I want to also thank CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments, and also big, big thank you to Connecticut DOT for what they've done, are doing, and will continue to do when it comes to trails across the state, specifically here in Plainville. As, as most of you know, it's, it's been almost, I just looked up our first, our first public meeting in Plainville for these studies that you're looking at here was April of 2016. I couldn't believe it. But on, on the left there of the screen is the north-south report for the five-mile gap on the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail from Northwest Drive down to Town Line Road. That was unanimously endorsed by the town council back then, and on the right was a separate study for the five-mile gap between Town Hall in Plainville to the CT Fast Track Station in New Britain. And, next slide, please. The, I just want to go through, I want to focus on the report from the east-west study. So what you see here is a map from that report, and again, this was a planning study, and just walking you through it very briefly. It starts essentially at Town Hall. It actually started at Pier Street, because at the time that was the anticipated junction between the north-south Farmington Canal Heritage Trail and the east-west trail. So starting at Pier Street, we followed West Main Street across the railroad tracks and past Town Hall out to Pine Street, and took a right and went down Pine Street, Woodford Avenue, and then Woodford Avenue all the way to Crooked Street, and all the way into New Britain, to using Black Rock Avenue, past Tocan, and all the way through New Britain, following the Route 72 highway corridor essentially, all the way to the CT Fast Track Station. There, there was no design. This was a planning study. I just looked at an alignment, a routing, if you will. And it went through the same criteria, if you remember, for those, many of you I know in the audience and on the council attended, walked through these things, and attended some of those workshops and public meetings, so I know you're, you're well aware. This is just zoomed in on the same map, but this is just the Plainville portion, again, from Pier Street down Main Street to Woodford Avenue to State Road, out to, just past Crooked Street to Tocan, and then you're at the municipal border with New Britain. Next slide, please. I just want to go over, there were some questions about right-of-way impacts. There are only essentially, during the planning study, and that's what I want to focus on, during the planning study, there were only two sort of identified right-of-way impacts, and I just want to go through them quickly. This slide merely shows the intersection of the West Main and Pine Street. But again, this is a proposed road diet. If you, if you read the study, and I encourage everyone, we've maintained the project website for all these years, so it's still live, and has been so since the study began. The website is www.gap closure study.com, and it has all the resources, all the newsletters, all the meeting minutes from all the public hearings and steering committee meetings, et cetera. But this is anticipated to be a road diet from here, and what that simply means is using the existing right-of-way and reconfiguring the roadway in such a way that it would handle the traffic that's there today and a multi-use trail. So whether it's on the one side or the other is to be determined. The design is to be determined, but I just wanted to mention that it's a road diet from here all the way to Crooked Street. So next slide, please. Again, focusing, this was the first right-of-way impact that during the planning study, I'd identified as a potential right-of-way impact, which is the condo association there at the intersection with Crooked Street there. It, we, we had proposed at that time a culvert underneath Crooked Street to make it easier for bicycles and pedestrians to cross that six-lane intersection. Upon further review, that may in fact end up not being possible with ADA, an ADA compliant trail through there. We're not sure yet, but, so there's other alternatives, and if, if that is pulled out of the project, then this, this right-of-way impact would likely go away. But I didn't want to mention it because it wasn't a study. So that's the first right-of-way impact as far as the study alignment goes, and then just past that, we impact Tocan's property in this red, this little red section here through their parking lot, and then we enter DOT property. The next slide will show one more right-of-way impact on Tocan parcel along 72. Again, at the planning level, this is what we identified. Of course, this all needs to be verified with survey and title searches, but those are the two, those three individual parcels, two on Tocan and the one of the condo association, that were identified during the routing study. Next slide. This is more of a reminder. I just wanted to direct everybody to please go, if you can spend weeks reading all the material that's on gap closure study.com. It was April of 16 that we had our first steering committee meeting. I'm still shocked it was that, that long ago. But there are all the steering committee meetings, the agendas, the minutes are there. We had technical team meetings, technical team workshops, and several public informational meetings, not only in New Britain, excuse me, not only in Plainville, but also in New Britain, and a lot of you were there. The turnout was, was amazing. The citizens of Plainville and New Britain definitely came out and had their voices heard. So, next slide, please. This is a graphic that I pulled out of the actual study. This is a concept of, it's two different concepts, actually, for Woodford Avenue. These are just rough sketches where they show different alignments for the road. But again, this is, it's a fluid living document, and once the design gets started, this will be all vetted with the town and the public once the, the design process gets started. But I did want to point this out, and you can see these, these graphics and the description of them in the study itself on that website. Next slide. With that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Rob, and I'll be here for questions after Rob finishes it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I think, I don't know, I, I wasn't involved with CROG at the time of the study, but I get excited when I see images like this of what could be on Woodford Ave, but that's just me. The timeline for some of these in Plainville, this is, right now I'm looking at the north-south sections that are in the RACE grant, and basically, I guess what I want, the point I want to get here is Condot expects completion of design in 2024 for the southerly one, I believe, and 2025 for the north section. And then each one would have a two-year design or construction timeframe. And this was sort of planned independent of the RACE grant anyhow, but like I said, we leveraged the funding to allow for funding of this east-west corridor, and the design timeframe, at least for the Plainville section, the design has not started yet. So that is why we're here. We want DOT especially, and CROG, we want to make sure that everybody's happy with the alignment and that everybody's on board with moving this forward, and so following this presentation, but we will, we will, well, I'm going to save it for the next slide. How can Plainville help? we will, well, I'm going to save it for the next slide. How can Plainville help? We have prepared a, or Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager have prepared a resolution that might, that would come to you potentially the next meeting, I believe, of the town council. And really, what this, what needs to be, the assurance that we need is that the town is on board conceptually with the alignment, because it is a quick design turnaround due to this RACE grant conditions, that we have to be done with design by September 2026. So, we need some kind of endorsement of the alignment, as in the study, and an acknowledgement of the only piece that is not funded under the study, which would need to be a town's responsibility following completion of construction, is a general maintenance agreement with the DOT. There's certain elements that the DOT would be in charge of maintaining, and others that the town would be in charge of maintaining upon completion. And that's standard for trails throughout the state. So those are the two items that would be in that resolution. And then, there would also be, as Mark mentioned, there would also be plenty of opportunity for town input during the design. Every section that gets constructed will need to go to a public information meeting, and of course, the town staff can be involved in the process throughout. So, that's our presentation. Thank you very much for listening, and I'm sure we'll take any questions yet.
Great. Thank you very, thank you both. Does anybody have any questions right now regarding the presentation tonight? I have a quick question.
Sure.
Regarding the maintenance agreement. Can you expand on that a little bit? Are we, in terms of maintenance, are we expected to clear snow from the path? Are we expected to repair it once this is, once, you know, it goes forward? Are we going to be responsible for repairing and investing dollars into it locally? What does that maintenance involve?
Mark is more of an expert on that than I am, so I'm going to
Okay.
Put him on the spot.
Sure. You know, the details will be ironed out during construction, obviously, before construction is completed. But the kind of agreements that we typically see are general maintenance items, you know, and, you know, don't quote me here, but, you know, there's things like mow twice a year, blow leaves twice a year, remove trash, remove graffiti, maintain benches and stuff like that, fence repair, stuff like that. If there's a flood and a section gets washed out, that's a major capital investment, that's not the kind of general maintenance we're talking about.
Okay. Can we get a list of that, just a listing, if you could, if you don't mind forwarding in an email or something to Town Manager, and then we can get a list of those items that you are aware of that the town would be responsible for?
Yeah.
I can forward to the Town Manager some sample agreements that have been executed.
Okay. That'd be helpful. Anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
Yes. Just once again, clarification on the endorsement of the preferred alignment for the CT Fast Track section. That would mean that we would endorse the general route that you've laid out, correct?
The general route, but not, not design specifics of whether the trail is, you know, if it's kind of a boulevard type of thing with the trail in the center, or to the north or to the south, just the general alignment. In the timeframe we have, we don't have time to explore different roads as options. We can look at options in the same route and same general alignment, you know, in the same roadway right-of-way, but we can't be looking at alternate routes. We just don't have the time to do that. And the thought is that was fleshed out in the prior study.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that, you know, that it was the same as we had done for the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail alignments. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm concerned about the safety of the citizens. Is this going to be parallel with the roadway? It's going to be off the road? It's going to be on the sidewalk? I'm not really sure. Can you?
That's to be determined. There's, of course, there's a big portion of it that's behind parking lots in between Route 72 and the parking lots. But then, the part on Woodford Ave, I think there were a couple thoughts here, and it's yet to be determined. But here are a couple thoughts of putting it between the roadway and the parking, you know, or having something down in the center with cars on either side, each direction on either side. But it's yet to be determined. There hasn't been any design done yet, just a preferred alignment. So, that would be something that would have to be ironed out.
I guess I would, I guess I would only add that, of course, the trail would, whatever configuration it ends up in, the design would obviously meet all the safety standards and all the protocols, ASHTO standards, and MUTCD standards, and all the other federal standards that are required that DOT designs all their trails to.
Any other questions? So, what you are looking from the town right now is a signed resolution to endorse the alignment, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking from?
I believe that would be next, at the next meeting.
From the town?
Yes.
So, I, yeah, I wouldn't, I would look forward to getting that other information about the maintenance and the upkeep and such before, you know, we go to a signed resolution. I also think David has some very good questions about expanding on the detail as to where the trail is. Is it in the road? Is it off the road? Are we creating a separate travel way? We, I think if we could get some more definition about that, that would also be helpful for us to understand, because we are going to ask our residents to, you know, if they live near there, or they travel on that area, we need to know what's expected.
I believe, Mark, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the report had the trail off the roadway.
Okay.
For the majority of the alignment. There was a portion where it was going to be combined, potentially. Mark?
The, yes, the, and I just, I want to focus on what the study said. The study essentially, for the section from Pier Street to Pine Street, because Plainville already has a nice downtown streetscape, and there's already sidewalks for pedestrians and sharers for the on-road bicyclists, that was the section that primarily would be untouched, if you will. The road diet, though, the rest of the trail, all the way to New Britton, is intended to be a multi-use trail. So it's an off-road facility. And as the term road diet, you know, implies that the roadway right-of-way is a fixed right-of-way. And, you know, Woodford Avenue, as you know, has so much pavement out there, it's not going to be hard to do a road diet and still fit in a trail. And, and so, whether it's on the north side or south side, again, that's to be determined based on survey and other safety considerations, how many curb cuts, et cetera, et cetera. But the intention is to have a dedicated multi-use trail off the roadway. And, and one of the standards, and you probably know, one of the standards is to meet an ASHTO standard, that trail needs to be, have five feet of horizontal separation from any travel lane. So, that's usually your green belt or your snowshoe before you, you know, get into the paved trail. And you've seen these around, there's Northwest Drive, for example, you know, so, yeah, but the specific design is to be determined once we start surveying, get that information.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions before we close? Okay. But, thanks to, thanks to both of you, you know, new information. We're constantly getting updates for the, for the trail project. I do appreciate you coming here tonight, and we'll look forward to getting the details that you're going to be sending along.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you, Rob.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wazarko.
Just before we move on to the middle school, I think I, and I have to, have to give an assist to the town clerk. We accidentally approved minutes of the January 17th meeting, which we should have approved the minutes of the February 6th meeting.
Oh.
So I'd like to just make a motion to amend that motion to say February 6th, 2023 regular meeting, and not January 17th.
Good catch. Thank you for that. Okay. You're amending the motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right.
Do you want to have your break now, or you want to wait?
We can wait.
Okay. All right. Sorry, sorry. After that's done.
Yep.
All right. Michael?
Yes. Okay. Back to the agenda. Item number two, discussion on the middle school. And I would just, I guess, start by saying that we're looking, we're here tonight to talk about what is essentially another option, a smaller-scale renovation project that, working with the superintendent and his staff, to get some information to bring here tonight. And we've done that. We've had some meetings. And I want to thank the superintendent for his time and for his staff. And they've put together a presentation, in slide presentation that we've loaded up here, and I think you all have written copies of that. So it started as, you know, just kind of looking at this from a bonding perspective and a local match of $10 million. Again, smaller scale. What could we do? What could we address? And then, of course, the school is very well-versed in terms of what those priorities are. So we sat in a room and began to go through, ticking through what those priorities would be. What could $10 million, if it was, if the council decided to go with that option, which is one option, what would it look like? Where would you start? What would you do? And we started out with 14 items, and that grew to, I believe, on the list, close to 18 items, trying to encapsulate and capture as many important items as we could. But the issue was, when you, when you look at some of these components, they are linked to other issues. And so, we, I think, I think the group did the best that they could to identify what would, what would, what would leverage this funding to do the most impact with, with the funds that you had. So, the other, the other component was to look at the state, not look at the state, but talk with the state about funding and reimbursement opportunities. So, we were able to get a meeting with, with the state to do that and to confirm with them what items in that list might be eligible for reimbursement in what they call a non-priority-type arrangement. And so, that helped leverage more items on the list, and that's why it grew to 18 items because of the reimbursement, for things like, starting with the roof and working our way down. So, that, I think most members understand that roof projects are eligible, and that is, of course, what they told us. So, without any further ado, I think I'll turn it over to Superintendent LaPage, who has a presentation that will be here and walking you through what we've accomplished in terms of the information that we found and the analysis that's been done to try and look at all of the different component parts of small-scale renovation, largely focused around maintenance items, you know, critical function, critical systems that need to be addressed. So, Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulus. Appreciate it. And of course, Mr. Sirielli. And I want to appreciate Sam Alderstein, our Director of Business Operations, for his part in this as well. And as, I think Michael did a nice job of summarizing where we are at this point, based on the investigations, the inquiries, the meetings that we've had to look at, the potential for an alternative to a full renovation project. I won't rehash the history for the last year that, you know, we prepared for that. But, you know, the understanding that we can't do nothing. So I think with the proposal that, what could we do if we had, say, perhaps $10 million? So that's, that's the direction we took at the request of the council and the town manager, and worked in partnership toward that. So this presentation will summarize. You know, I think Mr. Paulus did a good job of explaining some of that, but I'll go through it step by step. So just some notes and assumptions. The numbers that were used for the cost estimates of this smaller-scale project are based on the cost estimation work that was done last May as part of our preparation for the application for renovation. So those prices, we believe that those are still pretty close to accurate, if, you know, if not a little bit low, but they've held pretty well. So, that is the, the cost estimates that we use so far. Obviously, if we're going forward with these projects, we'd have to go through the whole, whole process of building up each project, preparing for that, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The direct costs plus the contingency escalation, design, and other indirect costs are included, consistent with the May approach as well. That was the recommendation of Construction Solutions Group that we'd worked with. While the costs and the maintenance, they refer to this as a maintenance plan instead of a renovation plan, would be different. We believe that using the appropriate estimates at this stage, that we are using appropriate estimates. One caveat is that as time goes by, the amounts may be too low because, because of the escalation of costs. So that's something to be aware of. The next step would be hiring professionals for planning and designing in support of this effort, this new approach. We have met with them. We still had some, some time with them that was carryover from last year's work, and they, they did guide us to some extent. And then, state grant funding for Plainville is currently 65.71% of eligible, of eligible items in a renovation or for certain items, and I'll go into that a little bit. But the areas that we found to be eligible, based on, Mr. Paulus and I had a conversation with three, three leaders from the state Department of Administrative Services last Thursday afternoon. The roof, the elevator, and the underground storage tank removal would be eligible for those reimbursement at the full 65.71%. It did confirm that although the full renovation would have a reduction due to the size of the building, that does not apply with the smaller non-priority projects these are called. So you'd get the full 65.71%. Next slide, please, Andy. Thank you. I know there's a lot on there, and I'll try to, try to break it down. But, so the potential for state reimbursement. So as I said, Town Manager Paulus and I met with Bob Selmer, Doug Rogers, and Michelle Dixon, met at the state Department of Administrative Services for quite some time, especially Michelle and Bob. I had met with them previously about the application for the renovation. Just to share the current status and where we stand, to get some direction about what, what alternatives and options we might have. And so basically, two points in that conversation. What could be grant subsidized within the current proposal for a maintenance approach, and what would be the likelihood of a future renovate-like new option if we were to go this route? So hopefully, just share briefly on those. And I do only have six slides, which is unusual for me. So, this won't be too long. So, I just want to give people an end in sight, because they know how I get.
No pictures.
No pictures either, not a one. So, non-priority, these are called non-priority state grant eligible items. That would include, as I said, the elevator. It's, it breaks down kids and staff and parents get stuck in there. It's not a good thing. Needs to be done. The elevator would be approved for, again, not for full coverage, but for the 65.71% reimbursement. Also, the underground storage tank that's there, that does need to be removed. We still have some time before it's an absolute requirement, but it needs to be removed. They're not allowed anymore. And then, the roof replacement, which is a large project that would qualify for the reimbursement rate as well. The reimbursement rate for these projects, as I said, was 65.71%, or $65.71 on a dollar. Non-priority applications can be submitted during the first 10 days of each month. In order to do that, though, we have to have approval from the Board of Education. There has to be funding in place to support the project. The town share of the project has to be Board of Ed approval, Town Council approval, and then you go through the process of the next steps at the state level. The Secure Vestibule currently, I asked about that. It's an important item. It would not be considered a non-priority project. They said there is talk at the state in the legislature about making it a non-priority project, so it can be applied for a little more readily and a little more easily. But it's still currently a priority project. We could apply for that by June 30th and have it kind of go through the same process that you go through with like a renovation project. That'd have to be approved and, and move it forward that way. It is a rather, it's a rather pricey project, given, given what Construction Solutions Group estimated. So that's something that we could also apply for, there's a, there are, I think we're in the seventh year of the state security grant through Demos and in the state. We did receive some interoperability communication systems. Actually, they were testing the lockdown systems all day. Today, I was getting, I was getting, I was getting some alarming reports from our, from them testing that about, you know, active shooter, you know, alert in different buildings. But so we've been testing that. We got about $400,000 grant, you know, last year. But prior to that, we've applied every year, and we haven't gotten anything for the last four years prior to that. We did get some, a substantial amount the first year to do some security upgrades. So, it's not guaranteed. It's a, it's a competitive grant. I think they have $15 million that they're, they're using over the course of a number of years. So, but they did advise we apply that way also, and get what we can, and see if they'll cover some of it, and then apply through the priority projects approach, as I mentioned. So kind of a two-prong. So for the next slide, yeah, thank you, Andy. Yeah, thank you, Andy. Those are, the numbers you probably can't see from your seats, but this includes, you know, sitting down with Steve Bustler, former Director of Facilities, our current Director of Facilities, Michael Smith, Sam Alderstein, myself, and Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and looking at the real priority, highest need projects, starting with the top-down, you know, the roof, as anyone, we have a lot of, you know, middle school staff here and administer, you know, the principal, Amy Roberts, is here, as well as many parents who have reported getting rained on at different events. The roof needs to be taken care of. But when, as, as Mr. Paulus said, you know, the, the complication or the challenge is trying to look at things à la carte, you know, just do one item, because there are so many interconnected pieces of a project, you know, such as a roof. So when we looked at the roof, we also looked at the air handlers. There are 14 air handlers on our roofs, and it's, it's not really advised to do one without the other. The other, the other piece about the roof, from Bob Selmer telling us on Thursday, is that if you do the roof and, and you don't do the air handlers, for example, they wouldn't warranty through the renovate-like-new, if you went renovate-like-new approach in the future, they wouldn't be able to warranty that, because you'd be tampering with the roof that was already done. So there was discussion about that, and I may not be explaining it clearly, but they cautioned against things like that if you're ever going to do a renovate-like-new approach. So the roof with the air handlers, we saw those as, as important interconnected items. Those are the first two. Replacing the millwork, anyone that works in the building or visits the building for any period of time, especially on, you know, a damper day, there's a, there's a smell that comes from the millwork, the cabinetry, and all the classrooms, science classrooms, math, all the classrooms, you'll smell it. It's, it's been like that for many years. It's not something you can do anything about, other than replacing the millwork. It just, it off-gases an odor, and, you know, it's...
Why does it smell? What?
It's just from the, it's from the materials that the cabinets are made of. You know, it's normal to have a, an odor for a period of time, but they, if you go and just walk in the classrooms, you'll, you'll notice it. Amy, I'm accurate, right? I know, it sounds crazy. It's been, it's 32 years old almost now, the building, but there's still a smell that comes from all the millwork. So that was on the list, and when you do millwork, you'll see further down, you know, because you're, 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 you know, tampering with the flooring that, that the millwork connects up against. So our, our proposal was to consider the flooring in the classrooms where you're replacing the millwork as a part of, you know, as a project that would, one of those, one of those interconnected projects, if you will. The secure entrance, which I talked about, you can see in the second column of numbers over, the ones that are, that may have, the ones that will have state reimbursement, either through priority projects or, or non-priority. The priority project would be the vestibule. It would take longer to get that one done, to get it approved, I should say. And then the non-priority items are the roof, the elevator, and the underground storage tank. So you can see the different items on there. It includes the data systems that are going to support all the networking and the computers and the use of, the use of technology in the building. It's all outdated. Mr. Ross has done a great job of patching it together. We did go ahead, as the Board of Education Chair, Ms. Goncalvo, shared, they approved Esser funds for two middle school projects that we believe are really important, the air conditioning, the middle school gymnasium, because it gets super hot in there, and I get complaints every year, and I don't blame them. And then, using Esser funds and ARPA funds. And then the other one was the interactive display monitors to use in the classrooms, because our projectors and our old systems, it's the only building that doesn't have them. We waited, because we're going, we thought it would, you know, be done in renovation. So we moved forward those with Esser funds. Just getting back to this, the generator is, it's kind of on its last, its last leg. That needs to be done. I'm bouncing around. The chiller, the chiller is, is beyond its useful life. I missed that one when I was going down. The ceilings, you know, portions of the ceilings that would, again, with, with the millwork and other, other needs for access into the, the ceiling, you'd have to replace part of the ceilings. The elevator, the drainage in the front of the building, this is an ongoing problem. There's that storage pond in the front, and the drainage in front of the building, actually, water actually seeps into the front, into the chorus and band rooms, and has, you know, comes up through the tiles. There's also some odor in those rooms, I think, from, from years of that happening. So really need to address that drainage issue. That was all included in the renovation specs to do that. So those, those go together. You'll see the vapor barrier and music room floors further down, also with the, the drainage work in front of the building that's a little further up. Hardware, we can, there is, there is no fix for the hardware in the buildings, in this building. There's, there's multiple keys throughout the building, too, so it gets really complicated. It's been piecemealed together by talented maintenance individuals over the years, but basically robbing Peter to pay Paul, taking interior parts from an interior door that isn't used, or use less, and using those to fix another door. So you have to really replace it all, and we're waiting to get that done. So that's in there. Student lockers are really, you know, they're, they needed to be done. That was something that was, that was identified as an important project to get completed. The PA system is, is really poor. The quality hearing, if there was, if there's an emergency and needing to get a message out through the PA system, it's, it's not good. It needs to be replaced. And then, I think, oh, just the walk-in refrigerator freezer boxes, walk-in refrigerator boxes at the middle school is, is really, is suffering. It needs, it needs to be replaced. And then finally, the, the upgrade to the bleachers to be ADA compliant. We did check with the state. If it was part of a renovation, they would cover it. Any ADA upgrades, they cover as part of a full renovation package. They do not cover them as Singleton projects like this. So we asked about that specifically, because it's an ADA item. That's correct, Michael, you heard that as well?
Yes.
Yes. So that's a walkthrough on what is included in the, it comes out to be, you know, closer to $11 million, so I guess we rounded up to $10,948,000. Wishful thinking. But this is what we feel would be important to include, and, you know, given the, given the grant offsets, it would, it would go from $14,613,000 down to $10,948. Okay, on the next slide, thanks to Andy. This is what would not be covered, so you can see the, the priority list that I just discussed in that left column. That includes, you know, some of the mechanicals, some of the, some of the, some of the general construction work, the site work, the roof, the floors, the equipment, the ceiling, portions of the ceiling, anyway, and the lockers. That adds up to the $14 million before the grant offset. The full renovation project was going to be $58,723,000, so the, the difference is that far-right column. And, you know, the most important takeaways from this is about 56% of what remains after this project is building mechanicals, most at the end of their life. It's unlikely that we would go very long without having to address a number of these items in the future. It's unknown how long they could last, but, you know, if they're past their life, it's, it's a risk. Some of the costs in other categories could also be, would also require additional capital investment in coming years. So, you know, I did want to share, you know, what's covered, potentially through this proposed, you know, from what we were requested to, you know, prioritize, and then what would not be covered. So I think it's important to see, to see both. And then the last slide, this was really in response to some concerns that were brought forward at the last town council meeting, and I just wanted to touch on those, you know, at the request of Chair Owen Pagliisi and Town Manager, and follow up from that last meeting. So inconsistent heating and cooling, there were some, there were concerns expressed about, you know, some of the rooms getting extremely hot. And then, you know, the, that does happen in some, in some locations. Partial solution, proposed upgrades within the priority plan, you know, there's really nothing you could do as a standalone, so that may, we should be able to address some of that through the, you know, the priority plan that was, that I just shared with the air handlers and just upgrading the system in that way to be more efficient. Leaking roofs, replacement has been proposed. Those are, these are some of the most frequently, frequent complaints. Odors, we get a number of complaints, you know, there are some from drains in the art room that you heard about last time, and then some from, from the millwork that I just shared. Outlet's not working, and we're following up on that. This would be a repair item. We'd be able to replace outlets that don't work. So I'm not sure of the specifics of that, but our, our maintenance team is following up with that. Moisture in the, in the band and chorus rooms, I mentioned the vapor seal that would need to go down underneath the flooring, and also address the drainage in the front of the building, potentially redirect it to the back drainage pond. So that, that would be some site work, as proposed in the $14 million plan. And then slow art room sink. This was a, a long answer, but basically, when that, when that space was designed, it wasn't designed for the amount of use of a sink for, for a busy art room. It has a, I think it said a one and a half, yeah, one and a half inch pipe, you know, you need to install a larger drain. The wall would need to be removed, floor dug up, access to the drain for repiping. So that, that was included in the renovation plan, you know, with different sinks and everything like that, to make it more of a space conducive to the needs. However, it's, it's not something that, you know, despite cleaning it and doing their best to maintain that, it's not something that can be addressed without changing it to a different-sized pipe and different system. So I think those were the, the main items, and I'm sure some of the middle school staff could share others that they've, they experienced on a day-to-day basis, but just wanted to follow up on those items at, you know, at the request of council and town manager. And that concludes my six pages of information. I'm happy to take any questions and do the best I can to answer them.
I just wanted to, if I may, Matt?
Sure.
Chair, just to talk about Superintendent LaPage's comments with the state. The state left the door open for us to come back in, in terms of ongoing dialogue with them as we embark on this project and, and as the council goes through this process to try and figure out what we need to, you know, to make the most sense, or if you need additional information as to, you know, what would happen next. They left the door open for that, for us to come back and collaborate with them, and they're willing to help us through this process so that we, you know, get the most that we can for them.
I did ask the question, you know, would we, would we be eliminated from a future application if renovated as new? And there's a, there's a 20-year wait period on the items that are, that are covered before they would be eligible. And, you know, his basic answer was it would be unlikely that you'd be eligible. He said you could qualify for extension alteration, which is a lower, lower reimbursement rate projects, but not for the renovate-as-new, if you're, if you're completing some major building systems, such as are proposed here. I believe I'm stating that accurately, Mr. Paulus?
Right. And it is, there is a lesser program or another program, just like there's priority, non-priority, and then there's this other, other category, because what you, what happens is you start going à la carte and taking the, obviously, starting with the roof, mechanicals and so forth. We don't get all of it, but, but you are getting pieces, and I think we understand that, you know, coming back at them, you know, whether it's five years, seven years, 10 years from now, they're going to have a record of that that says, well, you put a roof on and you put air handlers in. We're not doing that, but we'll do, we'll do these other things, and you'll get reimbursement, but it won't be at the, it won't be nearly as, as high as the non, as I understand it, the non-priority is the highest level in terms of reimbursement at 65. So that, that's a pretty good rate, but we wouldn't get that going forward after we complete these items.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Superintendent LaPage regarding this new proposal, new things to think about?
I have a question.
Mr. Underwood.
Steve, are you convinced that the safety of the children will be protected under the program you want to put forward? The vestibule and, and anything else that might be a concern between the kids and the employees?
Well, yes, and I take that seriously now. So, you know, we have taken temporary measure that's may become more permanent, because he's become a part of the community, but with an, you know, with an armed security guard to assist in the building. We do have the SRO as well. But yes, the absolutely, the, the secure vestibule with a mantrap, as it's referred to, is critical. It's something that, you know, is required of any new school or any renovate-like-new. It's the only school we have that doesn't have that. You know, we do have locked exterior doors, you know, so that's a good thing, of course, and it's a requirement. And we have, you know, cameras, you know, but now we have, you know, Miles Ginley, who's right at the front door, so that's a temporary, you know, measure that we're taking to, to make sure, you know, we're not going to wait for the vestibule to be done before we address what's been an ongoing concern of mine. I never felt comfortable with it, obviously, you know, for obvious reasons. That feeling's only grown over the past few years, so that's one step we took. But yes, this, the renovation or, or this approach, getting the vestibule done one way or the other, would definitely add a layer of security, along with the hardware. You know, the, the door hardware is, it sticks, it jams, it malfunctions, some of the doors don't shut right sometimes, you know, so we're always checking that as well, because that, that can leave you vulnerable as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary?
Yes, I have a question. Superintendent LaPage?
Yes.
And this may be asking you just to restate the obvious, but in looking at the list of the MSP needs, and I'll just pick one for example, as an example, like site work, for example, I noticed the renovated new did include quite a bit of external work, if I recall, yeah? None of which is really included in the, in the, the option that was presented.
Correct. Other than the drainage, so it wouldn't address the, you know, the ball fields that are, that are in horrible shape, or the, you know, the redirecting the traffic flow, which was part of the plan with the buses, and, and so it wouldn't address any of the, you know, paving and all those other things.
And the paving, I think, was included, looking back at the May and June documentation.
Correct.
So just, once again, it's probably restating the obvious, but it may not be in bad shape now, but in 10 years, if, if, if the asphalt is, our option most likely, unless it were a non-priority item, that could be funded, which I don't know what paving is. I don't think it is.
No.
Because I know we paved at the high school, and it certainly wasn't a reimbursement.
Right.
We would be paying 100% for that.
Correct. As, as far as I know, unless there's another grant that comes up, but I don't believe there is. You know, I know there are for the roadways, there's some grants that you can take advantage of, not for parking lots that I'm aware of.
Right. So, and there's other examples, the building mechanicals may or might, may not qualify as a non-priority item, and if not, and if they're needed, then we would be paying 100%.
They, they don't qualify as a non-priority item. I asked that question specifically from, from the state on Thursday, just to make sure, and they said, no, they, they wouldn't qualify. They qualify under, under renovation, but they don't qualify as, as standalone projects.
And just my last example, the technology. Now, you did indicate that some will be paid for from, by Esser, the displays which are really needed and which were counted on as, as something that was going to be part of the renovate-as-new. But once again, anything that is not covered by the Esser funding, or I assume that the, the category says teledata includes some of the technology, you said networking?
Right, that's all the networking.
That was put in as one of the additional items, okay.
It was. That was added after we, we learned of what.
But whatever is, is not included, once again, that, I'm sure, probably is not a non-priority item. I would assume that, that would be, once again, something we would have to fund 100% through our capital plan or...
Right. Yes, the only things that would, would be a non-priority approved item would be the roof, the elevator, and the underground storage tank.
And the same for some of the other equipment for other areas that was proposed in the renovate-as-new. We would be on our own.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for the superintendent?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. LaPage.
Hello, Mr. Goncalo.
All right, so quick question. The teacher that you mentioned that came down, and she was at the art room?
Yes, sir.
Okay. She said that the stink was affecting the health of the, of the students and the staff, right?
She made a comment about making, making them feel sick. I think it's more, you know, when you smell a foul odor, it wasn't a toxic odor, but when you smell a, a bad odor, it just makes you feel kind of sick to your stomach. I believe that's what she, she meant.
Okay, understood. I was wondering if in the meantime, it might be a good idea to put them in a temporary room so that they, they stop feeling sick? Like if maybe you could put them in like a temporary room?
We did.
And then, in the meantime, if you can go and fix the drainage with some of your staff for maintenance, I think that might be a pretty good idea.
Yeah, we, we've done all the maintenance that can possibly be done to address any problems that come up. I did want to make that clear, because our maintenance team, it's, you know, and I know a concerned citizen spoke afterwards, you know, you know, the nice gentleman was concerned that we were not doing things because, you know, we wanted to just renovate, but our maintenance staff does repair and maintain everything that they can. You know, they've put off replacement of large, major projects, we, you know, through a, an understanding that renovation would take care of those at the 30-year mark. But as far as the day-to-day, addressing what they can, you know, doing the best you can with what you have, for that, for the sink drain, it would require taking out the wall, digging into the ground, putting in a, an inch in diameter, larger pipes, that you'd have more water flow, and then restructuring the sinks in that room. That was part of the renovation plan. Um, it can't be done without a major construction project, and there's no other place to put that, that art teacher. There's not, there's not a space to. Uh, we, you know, we've looked at that, we did follow up right away with our maintenance staff and our custodial staff, and any issues like that, you do the best you can to, you know, clean the drains and, and keep them, keep them moving. The same thing happens with like grease traps, you know. I remember when I was the principal at the high school and the grease traps would get backed up, it's not much worse than that smell, um, so you'd, you'd address that through, you know, they'd, they'd clean those out. So they do those things when, when they have issues, but, um, you know, without, without really renovating the, the plumbing.
Okay, thank you. I was just hoping you had maybe a temp space for them, but if you don't have one at that time.
No, it's, uh, fully utilized right now.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, can I ask a couple?
Sure.
I have a few, but I'll ask a couple now. To try and get an apples-to-apples comparison to a renovate like new as proposed with what this proposal is, you know, a question like with the elevator, and here you, you would replace the mechanicals of the elevator. In a renovate like new, would we, would we also get like a brand-new elevator and shaft, or is it the same? In a renovate like new, would we also just replace the mechanicals? Or do you know the answer to that?
I don't know the answer. I'd be making it up. I, I think, I think it's full replacement in either, in both cases.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we can, you know, it's a pretty pricey project, so I believe it's a full replacement of the, the actual elevator.
And you feel free to get back to me.
Yeah, and they would have to do, they'd have to do a design plan for that, and then, you know, that would cover whatever was included in the cost. Mr. Elderstein, do you have an answer to that?
We use the cost as if it was just like a renovate like new project.
So they would be the same, that's, I guess, my.
Whether you can design it that way.
Right, right, okay.
That way is to be determined, but they actually start designing, they may find that that's not practical.
Right.
Part of what you're alluding to.
And we won't find that out until we actually get into like a design phase.
Correct, yep.
Okay. And, you know, like you, you talked about, you know, ceilings, like if, if we, with this proposal, you know, you're breaking into the ceiling to do something, so you would replace that piece of ceiling with a new piece of ceiling. Now, a renovate like new, would we get completely new ceilings in all the rooms?
The entire building would have new ceilings. They'd, they'd gut all of that so that to get, they could get to the ventilation shafts.
Okay, yep.
Because those would all be replaced. You know, with the air handlers, you're not replacing the ventilation shafts, you'd only replace the air handlers that move the air. So you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be going into the ceiling, you know, that would get to a whole different level of, of related costs, but.
And, and this may be more for the town manager is, or, or both of you actually, is, is can we apply for a secured vestibule through the priority process before we get a formal approval from the board, the council, the taxpayers, because we're going to have to go to referendum and, for this kind of situation, I imagine? So, or do we have to get that formal approval before we can apply?
We have to go through the same process we went for the renovation.
Okay.
So it has to be approved by the board, approved by the council, has to be, there has to be funding in place to support the project.
But like, we can apply for renovate like new, we can submit the paperwork before, for example, we have an approved referendum.
Correct.
Would that be the same case with, with this proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding. Is that yours?
Yeah, if, if you're asking about separating, because the vestibule, secure vestibule would follow a different path.
Correct, yeah, and that's why I was asking.
Then the, if, if the council chose a, a maintenance plan option, yeah, you'd have to run them concurrently, I guess.
Okay.
Carolyn.
All right. And, and I understand that this proposal does, you know, meets, you know, what, 20% to 30% of the needs of the school, as you, as an administration, as you see it.
Well, if you just look based on price tag, it's about 25% of the, the renovation cost, it's not a great way to.
And you might not have looked at this, but my question is, doing it this way, say we decide instead of a renovate like new that, you know, we're, we're going to try to approve 14.6 million, hopefully we get 3.6 in return from the state, you know, how many years out, you know, what, how close to that 58 million that we had from May of 2022 for a renovate like new? How much of that 58 would we need doing it this way to com, to complete everything in a renovate like new project, if that makes sense?
I think I know, yes. You're never going to get the same new school feel like you have at all the other schools in our town. You'll, you'll have to repair things as they break, as I mentioned in the, in the report. The, the mechanicals are the big concern, because that's still about, I don't know if you go back to that slide, Andy, but it's about 56%. Is that the one part, part of that?
Oh, this right here.
Oh, you were on the one, yeah. Never mind. So about 56 of what remains is building mechanicals. So those, you know, most of them at, are at or beyond their expected life, so, you know, that, that top line, their remaining 24 million, you know, there's, there's a lot involved there, so. It's, it's taking a risk, you know.
No, I understand. I just, you know, I might, you know, in my head, what I'm trying to do is to, to say, you know, and it sounds like, you know, anyone on the council disagrees with me, please say something, but, you know, we agree something needs to be done, and I think we all would agree that we'd like to do it for the least amount of money, cost to the town, talk, cost to the taxpayer. So, you know, you know, even if, let's say, doing it this way, we end up spending $40 million and we get 20, 25% reimbursement, which it looks like we do with this first installment, I'll call it, you know, we're still, that's $30 million cost to the town in that, in my scenario. You know, we're, we're looking at a renovate like new, we're looking at something in the 24 to 25 million dollar range.
Correct.
So I'm trying to, trying to get an, an apples-to-apples comparison between this direction as opposed to a renovate like new, because if going in this direction, what you're proposing tonight, if it's less expensive than a renovate like new to the town, I'm, I, I would support that, that makes a lot of sense, but, you know, my concern is looking at these numbers that we still have $58 million worth of work to do. We, we tackle 14.6 in this first year, um, and it just doesn't look like we get the reimbursement we would get in a renovate like new, and I feel like doing it this way right now, and I, I imagine we'll have further discussions, there'll be more information shared, would be more expensive than a renovate like new.
That's, that's my belief. And the only, the only reimbursable items, even going into the future, they're already being addressed through this, this, this approach, this priority. So it's the roof, you know, the, the elevator and the underground storage tank, and then hopefully the vestibule through a priority grant. We went through the list of what can be covered, and there really wasn't anything else, so then.
So that 40, 44 million dollars that's left, we don't anticipate much reimbursement, if any?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to make that clear, because it's not like you'll get 25% of the cost each time. We're kind of taking care of some of those most important, you know, most critical issues with the leaking roofs and the, so those, there are a few of those, the roof, you know, the elevator and the storage tank that.
Again, I have two more questions. You know, is there any opportunity to get our state representative or state senator involved to try to change legislation to allow us more reimbursement if we go with the plan we're talking about tonight? I know way back, State Representative Bocus was able to change nothing, I don't think it was directly related to a renovate like new, but she was able to get some legislation changed that allowed us to receive more reimbursement. And also, the Capitol Building Project Committee, have, did they look at other options outside of renovate like new?
No.
Personally, I should probably know that answer, and, you know, like, we've been talking about this for a few years, but I, off the top of my head, I don't remember an, an opportunity to talk with them and see if they explored any other, you know, something similar to this, and if they've done any research and had any, you know.
They haven't at this time.
Okay.
So I could, I could certainly call that meeting. We lost the chair and vice chair last year.
Yeah, I know.
Unfortunately, but we still have some members that we could pull together and.
Yeah, timing's everything.
Yeah, but we could certainly do that.
Any other comments or questions about the proposals?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. So, um, the space waiver that's been denied a couple of times?
Yes.
Do you know how much the 65.71% would be reduced because of that denial for the space waiver?
I knew at the time, if it went through and, you know, the last cycle, it would have brought us down to, I want to, it was 60 point, point something.
Okay.
I don't want to give you the exact number, but it was, it was 60 point something. Since then, our enrollment went down a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
I want to say maybe 10 more kids. So that, that would reduce it a little, you know, right around the 60, 60% instead of 65.71.
Okay.
So, we, we tried a couple of different approaches to get the waiver approved, and it wasn't approved, but that's what they recommended, Department of Administrative Services, you know, talk to your legislature. Sometimes they can, they can help you on that, like, I know they helped Farmington on their, their issue they were having over there, because they, they bid their project at the worst time, and then prices went up after. We're, we're in a different position than them. But yes, so that, that's something we could talk to the legislature about and try to get a higher rate. And also, as I had shared, um, previously, you know, there is, there is a, a bonus at the end of the project, once it's accepted by the Board of Education and as complete. It sometimes takes a couple of years to happen, but the, the percentage of students you have through the open choice program in that school is a, is a bonus added on that's, that's then comes to the town, so where 5% of our students come, come to us through open choice. So it would be a 5% bonus at the end. It takes some time, you know, it takes several years from the time, you know, the project is completed, but that's our understanding, that's what, that's what they shared.
Okay.
So it would bring us closer to, you know, ultimately 65.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, okay, we would not pursue the legislative action regarding the space waiver, unless we were actually decided, had decided to go with renovate as new.
Well, the.
Or is there any relevance with this other option, yeah?
I don't believe the legislature can affect the space waiver, the numbers. What they can do is, um, help to get you a, a higher percent potentially, you know, if, if the space waiver's not accepted, you know, you can speak with legislature and they can, you can work through them to try to get you, um, a waiver of a certain, you know, for a certain level, instead of going through the formal process if it didn't, if it failed that way.
But would the space waiver issue have any effect if we do not go with renovate as new, but rather with just getting reimbursement for these several items, like, such as the roof?
It wouldn't. They don't use a, they don't use a space waiver for the non-priority items.
That's what I meant.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we'd get 65.71%.
So, yeah, it's only relevant to a renovate as, as new. And if we were to decide to go with renovate as new, then we would pursue the legislative process.
Right, I would, I would probably take another attempt at writing another waiver.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, because it can't hurt. I wrote two. Yeah, I thought I had them pretty close, but.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't, they didn't budge. But there's new leadership there, so you never know.
Just wanted to be clear that it did not, yeah, to what it applied. Thank you.
Right, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Um, I'd just like to make a quick comment. I appreciate you looking into the issue in the art class at our last council meeting. Your art teacher, the art teacher, I don't know if you have more than one, you probably do.
There's two, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Mann came and, and told us about some of these conditions under which the children and the staff are working in their art class, and that was, um, that was concerning. I don't know how long that's been go, how long have those, have those issues existed for a long time? Is this, is this something new? How long exactly has that condition existed?
I don't have a good answer for you. I think it comes and goes depending on, you know.
More than a year, less than a year?
Ms. Roberts.
More than five years? I just, I'm just curious if this is a new, new situation, or if this is something that has been ongoing for a number of years in that, that room.
My understanding is it's been ongoing.
I'm sorry?
My understanding is that it's been ongoing. I thought that's how she conveyed the.
So, that, that was a concern to me, that there are staff and children that have to do their work in a room that, that has this environmental problem, and this, um, other option of a smaller scale renovation would take care of that problem?
No, that's not included in this, no.
Well, what can we do to take care of that problem? Because we certainly can't have people doing that. Is that not a priority for you? Outside of renovate like new? Talk about that room.
You set me up pretty good for that one. I was going to say renovate.
Rooms can be, things can be fixed.
It could, it could be a, it could be another project. We could, you know, take down the wall and dig up, you know, as it said in the little fine print next to that item on that last slide. It, it required, you know, some more major construction, more intrusive construction and, and putting in a, a different sized pipe. I don't know how, we'd have to get someone to come out and evaluate that. The plan was to do that as part of, you know, the renovation, but if, if that's not the way we're going to go, you know, my understanding is that there's nothing hazardous, it's more of a unpleasant odor, you know? If it was anything hazardous, we'd be much more concerned, but nobody wants to smell, to smell rotten eggs or.
No, of course not. And if it's been going on for years, I think it should have been taken care of, or at least developed a different plan to not use those rooms that are problematic. The school is, we know that there's extra space in that school, we know that, because the waiver, there's, there's extra, it's not built out, but there is room in that school to do some other things. And is there not ever been a thought about fixing, moving the classroom to elsewhere and building out another classroom so that the people in those spaces don't have to deal with that? Has that ever been thought of?
We have, we have a district storage area that wouldn't be suitable, it's just, it's where all of our schools in district storage is held, and we have a space we rent out to Oak Hill, to a special education program, and they pay, you know, the town gets about $120,000 a year, I believe, for that rental.
Right.
Those rooms, you know, they could be perfect for art rooms, they just need, they need some upgrades, they need, and it's, it's a, I'm sure it's an issue that's developed over time, it's 30, 31 years old, and the drain needs to be larger, so we could look at adding that to the list, you know, if it's a, if it's something that we believe needs to be done. I'll, I'll follow up with our maintenance team, and we can look at prices for that as well. I think every, you know, I think many of the teachers would have something to share, you know, and she was the one that came out, but I think if you go into any of the, you know, go into the science classrooms where there's a lot of the millwork and the cabinetry, you'll, you'll smell a certain distinct smell, um, from, from the millwork. So, I think that's, we were, we're looking forward to renovate as new option, to take care of all the issues that were addressed by 35 members of the EdSpec development team, that include the staff, the administration, myself, um, and designing what the school would be like. So, you know, we're trying to find an option B to approach, to address as many issues as we can, but there are a number of them. So, we're trying to give you what we can with what we have, and go from there.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughts on that. I'll ask the council once again if they have any other questions or comments regarding the proposals that we've been talking about tonight.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood?
I want to, Mr. LaPage, what would the program cost us, the modification program? The less expensive program? The taxpayers?
$10,900,000.
I'm sorry.
Some odd thousand.
I know what the total is, but what would it cost the people of Plainville? Any idea?
Oh, as far as, no, well, my understanding is that there's, even with a full renovation, there's enough room in the debt service to handle the renovation and, and more. You know, that, that study was done last year as well, so there's, there's a lot of room on the debt service. The town's done a very good job of managing debt service and, and sets aside, I think, four point, you know, I think it's 4.4 or 4.14 million each year. So that, you know, you've done a good job with that and projects coming off leave a lot of space there. So my, my understanding from, you know, town finance is that it wouldn't be a tax impact. So that's why I was, I guess that's part of my confusion.
I, I know we asked the town manager to come up with the breakdown for the project itself, the complete project. And I was just curious, after these figures come in, what the comparison would be.
Okay.
All set?
Anything else?
Okay. There are no other comments or questions. Thank you again very much for coming tonight. We certainly appreciate the time and effort that was put into putting this together for us. The council certainly understands the condition of the middle school. Even though it's only 30 years old, there have been older schools that have been renovated like new in our town, one of which was Linden Street School that had been built in 1918. There were some additions put onto it, but the main part of the building wasn't renovated like new until decades and decades and decades later. So we do appreciate the fact that some of our school buildings have been all done. Wheeler School was the last school building that was done, that was built in 1952 and did a renovate like new just about five or six years ago. So that school had, had waited in turn for, for its turn. So all, all that being said, we appreciate this information. It's all part of decision-making that the council's gonna be looking at and, and factoring in, as Mr. Underwood spoke about, the actual cost of both projects. Not just the fact that we're going to owe $24 million on a $59 million project. That $24 million is like a mortgage. There's interest costs, there's financing costs, and it's going to be for 20 years. So both projects are going to cost the taxpayer, not just the 12 million or the 24 million. There, there's additional funding that's gonna have to come along with both of them, just so we're clear. But we are going to get that information from our finance director once he has it prepared for us. So we have a whole picture of what we're talking about.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Could I just ask the town manager when, I imagine our finance director is gonna do some numbers for us?
Absolutely.
You know, and when he does the renovate like new numbers and then this proposal, I don't know how he's going to incorporate what's not in this proposal we're talking about tonight, you know, you know, it's addressing $14.6 million of the 58 and change that's required. So I don't know if I have a question, it's more of a statement of, you know, how will he adjust his numbers based on the fact that this constitutes 20% of what needs to be done at the school?
Yeah.
And you don't have to answer. It may be something to take away and talk about later, but-
Something to, food for thought, for sure. And, and I think the, the straightforward analysis would wanna be, what, what does a $10 million bond issuance look like and versus a, or 12 versus 24, whatever, how it shakes out. The other, you know, what, what I've gotta do with him and, and the delay is, is in finding the timing of that, right? So we need to know, okay, if a renovate as new project goes through the state process, what is the timeframe for that? And then, of course, if it's a local maintenance plan project, you know, that's on our own, but still with some reimbursement and application to the state, what would be the timing of, of starting that? And so then again, would we issue bond anticipation notes for the first two years and then roll it in? So depending on, you know, when each project would start. But to your point, yeah, that's, that's an interesting added component of saying, well, this is, if you do the maintenance plan, it's just the first piece of it.
Correct.
Then what? And there's probably a host of unknown questions to that, because as the superintendent and I were talking about with the state, there's possibility that you could go, you know, that you could try for a renovate as new down the road, unlikely, but you could still get under their other program, but we just don't know what that would, what that reimbursement rate would be and what those mechanical numbers, you know, would be three to five. That's a really, really tough animal to carve up, to try to put together. But, but I understand your, your, your point, I, the question. It's just tough, tougher to do.
Okay. Thank you.
All set?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mike. Mike, the bonding, you said we would only bond the 24 million, but wouldn't we really be bonding the 58 million and then getting reimbursement? So it's really, we're bonding $58 million?
You are bonding 58, the local share. I was looking at the, at the local share.
Right.
Yes, you are bonding the complete, just like you would-
Right.
Now, is that a change? Cause it used to, I know at one time you needed to bond the entire amount we got reimbursed. And then I thought the state changed it to where you just bonded your portion and they, they took care of the rest.
Well, that's, I will, I will confirm with the state and with the finance director. I'm sure he's, is aware of that.
Okay. Okay.
We'll, we'll do that. But I'm just, I was couching it in terms of local-
No, I understand. I just, I, I just, I thought at some point the state changed it to where you're not bonding the entire amount, you're only bonding your portion.
We'll find out.
No, because we pay it all upfront. We have to pay for it all upfront, Christopher. So, you know, the-
I think, it may have changed, but-
People doing the work aren't gonna wait for the state to pay them.
And then-
Well, we don't, we temporarily, well, and I don't wanna get into the details, but-
This gets a little complicated as to how these projects get paid for and funded. And, and yes, we need to get some better information about that. Rob Buden, our finance director, will be able to tell us how these projects are paid for. Do we, does, does the town have to pay for a big portion of it before we get reimbursed? Or does the contractor submit to the state and get paid by the state? I, I'm not really sure the technicality of how all of these things get paid, but we will find out, we can find out. And as we get more information, we'll certainly make that available to everybody. Those are good questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
Are we all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael, moving on to item number three.
Item number three, interesting subject matter of the lunch cart request. So this is historically, the council, as my understanding, has approved a lease for a portion of, a piece of property, a very small piece of property that the, the town owns. And so we have been approached by the owners of Sweet Works, run by Jen and Roman Urbina, requesting to lease a town-owned parcel at the intersection of White Oak Avenue and Woodford Avenue for a food truck operation. So my, again, my, my information is that this is not something new, that the council has done this in the past. And so they have come forward and are the latest applicant and would like to pursue this. Food car, food carts began to gain popularity in Plainville in 1990s and in some instances were popping up in uncontrolled and dubious locations. So to stop that from popping, them from popping up everywhere, including in the front of established restaurants, the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted a policy that requires food carts, trucks, and vans to obtain approval. So the town had previously leased the property for food truck operations and has modified the previous lease to accommodate Mr. and Mrs. Urbina's business, subject to the town council's approval. Attorney Mastriani has, his office has, has reviewed the lease, which calls for a rent of $100 a month. Insurances are also required. And since the footprint of what is proposed is in substantial compliance with previous P&amp;Z commission approval, there are no further zoning approvals that are necessary. It's just, it's, again, it's been, it's been approved in, in previous councils. So it would just be a, a new item, a new motion under new business to authorize the town manager to execute the lease for the use of this town-owned property for the new owner's new establishment that has requested this, the Sweet Works from Mr. and Mrs. Urbina. So that is what will happen on the new business side. I don't know if there are any questions on that. Item four I have is EDA revolving loan fund. So the January meeting, EDA members were unanimous in voting in support of increasing the lending cap of the EDA revolving loan fund from $40,000 to $50,000, while retaining the previously noted ability to recommend a greater amount with, with ultimate funding approval from the town council in the unique circumstances deemed worthy, if that ever comes up, that the council would have to approve that. But at this point in time, they're just looking to approve or have the council lift that and, from $40,000 to $50,000. The revolving loan has capped lending at its current limit since inception. Members feel that the current limit is no longer adequate, given rates of inflation. And further, the EDA members see an increase to the current lending limit as a potential recruitment tool, allowing Plainville to publicize the fact that we not only have business assistance programs, where we are actively addressing and reexamining parameters, working in the best interest of our local businesses. The EDA fund is currently funded at $276,000 with only a $5,000 loan outstanding. This $5,000 loan is part of a $10,000 forgivable loan that was issued to a local establishment. And so what you will see under new business is an item to approve, increasing the lending cap for the EDA revolving loan fund from $40,000 to $50,000 as recommended by the Economic Development Agency. Any questions there?
Madam Chair, just one.
Go ahead.
Did, did the Economic Development Agency talk about increasing the amount in their fund at all? Not just increasing the amount?
No, I don't believe so, because it, it is pretty, pretty healthy, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I can certainly go back to, to the Economic Development Director to see if that was part of the discussion, maybe not captured in the minutes, or maybe, maybe it was a-
I guess, yeah, and it just, you know, if we're increasing the amount they can take from the fund, do we need to make a, some type of adjustment to the fund itself? They anticipate more usage out of the fund? And that, that's a-
Yeah. No, great question. Yeah, I don't know, but I can certainly find out. I think they probably felt that with only one loan outstanding, that they certainly have enough to, to loan out.
Thank you.
The fund itself is very healthy, so.
Okay.
But good question. Thank you. I'm gonna move on to item five is the Robertson Airport Administration Building Roof Repair. The administration building roof is more than 40 years old and needs repair. The Aviation Commission has identified the administration building roof as a priority project. Attempts have been made in the past to repair the roof, but given the persistence of water infiltration, the roof's age, and the recent renovation of the administrative building's interior, the Aviation Commission, the Building and Grounds Department favor a complete replacement using SR Products Simon Roof and Sheet Metal to install the new roof. This contractor is available through the Interlocal Purchasing System, TIPS USA. It's a purchasing cooperative of which the town of Plainville holds membership under contract number 211001. The quote on the project appears in two parts. The base price of $65,900 and then a, what we call a, an add alternative, if you will, for a smaller portion, a smaller flat roof portion for $10,840, for a total project cost of $76,740. And it would be, this project would be funded through the Robertson Airport budget. So there is an item under new business that would award the bid to SR Products under that consortium purchasing cooperative that we have, and that's under new business. Hope there are any questions there on, on the roof. Six is the Honor Heights Discussion Update. The design for sanitary sewer extension was completed by Tygen Bond and was reviewed and approved by the Engineering Department. Three easements are required for this project and negotiations are ongoing and should be finalized in the next six weeks. Fingers crossed, we hope that can happen. And this is an item that occurs under new business. It would be to authorize the town manager to solicit bids for the Honor Heights sanitary sewer extension project. And if authorized, the bid documents would be released to the public on February 27th, 2023, with sealed bids to be received by March 20th, 2023. And the bids would be good for 120 days after the bid opening. And I knew John, the town engineer, John Bossy is here as well, if there are any questions. But you know, we've been working on this. This would be the next logical step in terms of putting the bid out to find out how close we are to the original estimate that was put out a year ago. And so these would get the, the hard numbers to know what the, what the project cost would be. So that's an item under, under new business.
Okay.
And item number seven is the conversation around the Conservation Commission request. This deals with the north-south alignment of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. They had sent a letter and I attended a, a meeting. They're concerned about the alignment and I sat with them and heard their concerns and said that I would bring their, their letter and copy and, and comments to the council for tonight's meeting. They are concerned about the potential impact pedestrian traffic will have on the tranquil nature of the park. I think, I think the best way to phrase it is that, that it, although it's named a, a park, it's, in their minds, I believe, I don't, I, this is just my, my thing. I, I think they think it as a, a nature reserve or, or preserve, or not necessarily your traditional park where you have fields and activities. This is, this is a, a, a space for, you know, quiet reflection and tranquility. So that clearly came across from, from the members and they were concerned about the, the nature of a, a trail and bicyclists and hikers, joggers, you know, all of that recreational type of, of movement. And they were concerned about that. And they had considered and talked about trying to present a alternative alignment and/or restriction of access to the nature park and nature reserve. And those, I think, are in conflict with what we have already laid out with the Department of Transportation in terms of their alignment and use of the park and/or spurs, if, if possible. So I think what, what I'd like to do is, is again, I'd like to hear comments from, from the council, but I believe the dialogue, we're still open and dialoguing with, talking with the state about that alignment. And there's some issues that we've gotta deal with in the north-south alignment beyond just the Tomaso Park. We've gotta deal with the issue of a salt shed at the Highway Department, which is a major component, item that we have to deal with. And I can raise the issue in terms of the detail of how the gates and/or structure would be designed and to, if council feels appropriate, to try to compromise in some way, shape, or form. So that was it. I, I, it was, you know, a very nice meeting with members that are very passionate about the, the park and concerned about what the alignment of the path might do to their tranquility, I guess, in terms of those enjoying the, the outdoors. So.
Madam Chair, Mike, you remember a couple of months ago, we had a special meeting over at the library that had the Department of Transportation or was it, somebody that was in, in charge of the trail? And a lot of the members from the Conservation Commission were there at the time and they were talking about specifically what they were planning on doing through the, through Tomaso Nature Park. And we had already taken a tour months before, so we knew where, where they were planning on going. They also talked about sectioning it. It, it's really skirting the edge of Tomaso Nature Park. It's not going through the middle or, or around any waterways or anything like that. They, they are protecting the, the turtle nesting beds that are in there. And they're also creating different channels so that dogs, people with dogs and people with, on bikes and things like that could not get into the nature park off of, off of the trail path. They could not get into there. They would have turnstiles and things like that, so that it wouldn't be possible for people to bring their, their bikes or their dogs into the nature park, which is, you know, prohibited. And I think they did a really good job and very respectful of, of the nature park, you know, and putting the trail right at the edge so that it doesn't disrupt what was planned and, and what has been there for, for. So I don't understand, with the commissioners that were there that night, and they were okay after listening to this plan and talking and asking all their questions, I don't understand where the new upset is coming from. So I mean, do you have any, any insight into that? Because that was just a few months ago that we had that, and I don't understand.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's in the level of detail, like you said, in terms of what, what opportunities are there for entry into the Tomaso Park, right? And, and what's permitted, what's not in terms of, of, you know, you know, dogs getting in there and then so forth, bikes and so forth. Because I think that's really where I think we've got to, I've gotta take the conversation with, with DOT and get that level of detail.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All set?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, I, when I read the letter and then looked at those maps and I don't think they're, they're questioning the point, it's only like, what, 1,068 feet, .2 miles?
Right.
And it is, you're absolutely right, right. You know, we walked it very quickly, remember?
Yep.
You know, that little short stretch right along the side. It seems to be more about like where the entrances are, or people are going to get off the trail. So when I read through, my, my takeaway kinda was like, it sounds like maybe there could be some, like you said, Michael, some common ground and some compromise that, that can be reached. Cause we're, the, the actual placement of the trail, you know, I think is pretty finalized in terms of where it is. And it's a very short stretch. In fact, we walked it so quickly and weren't jogging or anything like that, right?
Right.
That it is a very short, yeah, stretch. And they, they seem, I think, you know, they might prefer not having it there at all. But I think the issue is more the entrances and getting on and off the trail and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll certainly get more information. We will, cause the state is looking to talk with us about the salt shed and we need to talk about that. So we can, we can certainly, that's, that is that piece, that component are almost tied, tied together. So that'll be easy to have that conversation.
Thank you. All set?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Next item is the financial dashboard. And I'll try to accelerate here and try not to, to get bogged down in here because the numbers are pretty good. So at least from my, my perspective. The front page, as always, we start with the, the town- The front page, as always, we start with the, the town full budget. At this point, 58.51% spent, which is under the two-year average. The same in the breakout of the general government and Board of Ed, both running under the two-year average. On the town side, we're at 64.02 and we're under the two-year average at 65.93. And on the Board of Ed's side, 55.20, under the two-year average of 56.45%. On the police overtime, left column in yellow, the police overtime is, the trend there is also a good trend, only spent 45.59%. So they are tracking under their two-year average. Currently through January 23, there's an expenditure of $250,737. The two-year average is 379,098. So tracking 128 lower over the two-year average. So a good trend there. The same can be said for the roadways overtime, tracking at 76%. They're under by 24,000. So again, a good trend. Building and grounds overtime, almost level par, they're just under by 244, spent 73% of their budget on overtime to date. Roadways, snow overtime. Again, as I commented last time, knock on wood, you know, that's just the nature of the season we've had. So those overtime, I think we've had one event technically that they've had to charge to those in either roadways or building and grounds. So again, just cross our fingers and see where that ends up by, by April or May. On the hauler, tonnage for municipal solid waste, the trend continues there, that it is under the two-year average, difference of 268 tons there. And the same with the recycling, the trend is also in our favor, under the two-year average to the tune of 86 tons. So again, happy to report that the trend is working in our favor. Next page on terms of revenues, not a whole lot to report there. You know, the, the average is, is right on, almost, almost exact from what we've received thus far through January 31 versus the two-year average. They're just percentage, almost exactly the same. And although the Board of Ed's side, or I'm sorry, the current taxes side are running a little bit higher than the two-year average, which is, which is a good sign in terms of revenue. The unassigned fund balance has no change there. We're still waiting for the audit numbers to come in there and I should be able to update that, those numbers, once we have those come in. On the special funds through January 31, the recreation fund expenditures through January 31, $136,446. That's a percentage spend of 50, 53, which is over the two-year average of 30%. And again, noting that the two-year average has included, the COVID skews those numbers and so they are now ramping back up. And that's why you see that increase and is also reflected on the other side of the equation with their budget revenues that have come in higher than their two-year average. The current percentage received is 48%, whereas two-year average is 37. So again, correlating with COVID and the dip in activity. So now that we're coming out of COVID, the activity is, is ramping up and getting back to new levels. And as you reported in the senior side as well, and not fully back to pre-COVID levels, but good to see that membership and activity is, is coming up. So that's reflected in their budget. The Robertson Airport budget expenditures are in line with 34.45% expended at this point. Their revenue, as you see on that side of the equation, is skewed by the ARPA fund infusion that was done earlier. So that skews that, but their, their fund balance is healthy at 316,423. On the WPCA, Water Pollution Control Authority facility budget, their expenditures are up. They've spent 20, excuse me, 75.15%. The two-year average is 62. That's a reflection of the fact that they have done hiring to replace the vacancies and folks, that they brought on individuals that they've hired and they're now up to full staff, full complement there, which is good news. And they are running ahead in terms of the budget revenues over the two-year average, received 114.42% over the two-year average of 105.5, which is typical this time of year in terms of how the revenues come in, in terms of timing and booking those revenues. The other one is the Plainville Library budget expenditures, right on at this point in time through January 31, $420,959. Percentage spent of 55%, which is under the two-year average of 60, which is a good trend. And on the revenue side, they have received 70%, right in line with the two-year average at 70%. So nothing out of the ordinary there. They're chugging along and doing just fine on the library side. And our last page, the major projects report, not a lot to report there. Nothing, not much has changed there. The road bond project obviously has concluded for the season and there is a project balance there of $2,659,626 that we'll be working on in the next season. The Wheeler School project, as noted, no, no change, unchanged, just waiting for the reimbursement. The high school turf maintenance fund, again, unchanged, nothing added to that, still holds project balance there. ARPA funds, we have not done anything since the last appropriation. And town line road reconstruction was finished as I reported, that came under budget. And the problem there is, is lobbying the cog and the state to get those program funds re-appropriated for other projects. So I'll stay tuned, stay tuned for that. Hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll hear something down the line. And then I added the Northwest Drive Rehab project budget was $928,000 revenue and then expenditures to date of $774,416 with a project balance of $153,629. But essentially, one of those projects that is in the wrap-up stages. And I'll get additional information from town engineer for the next quarter, next report on that.
Okay.
Let you know where we are. So that is for dashboard. Any, any questions on, on the report?
Okay. We'll hold questions until after Andy gives his report and then if anybody has questions for the town manager, Andy? Take it away.
Sounds good. Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
We have a few items to report under the happening section. The first is from the Historical Society. The Plainville Historical Society is hosting a two-part program in celebration of Black History Month. The event is this Thursday, February 23 at 7:00 PM at the Historical Society. The program will feature stories from Plainville's own African-American heritage and presenters are Gail Johnson-Williams, a local African-American history specialist, and her sisters Lisa and Allison Johnson. If you'd like to learn more information, you could go to the Plainville Historical Society website at www.plainvillehistoricalsociety.com. There's also information on there on how to register. From the police and fire departments, the police and fire departments will be hosting their first annual chili cook-off on Sunday, March 19. This is going to be from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM and the event will take place at the VFW Hall at 7 Northwest Drive in Plainville. Tickets can be purchased at the fire station or the police department and all the proceeds go to benefit the Plainville Food Pantry. From the senior center, in regard to all of these updates, information on the programs, including how to register, can be done by calling the senior center at 860-747-5728. And unless otherwise noted, the programs are free and open to the public. The first is Medicare Patrol presentation in bingo. This is this Thursday at 10:00 AM. You could learn how to protect, detect, and report Medicare fraud and abuse while playing bingo and winning prizes. The second event is the animals by Hungerford Nature Center. This is also on Thursday, it'll be at 1:30 PM. And you can meet and learn about the animals that live at the Hungerford Nature Center. There'll be some there to meet and greet and you could learn a little bit about, you know, the animals and who they are and what they do. Book Buds will be meeting on Friday, February 24 at 10:00 AM. Book Buds is a book club and this month they'll be discussing their February literary fiction book, Ask Again, Yes, by Mary Beth Keen. And the story features two families that are intertwined in happiness and sorrow. And the club's open to only members of the senior center. And if you're interested in joining, books are also available at the library front desk. Veterans Social Hour will be a Tuesday, February 28 at 10:00 AM. Veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses are invited to join this monthly information support meeting and it is facilitated by Sherry Vogue. She's the Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services. And you can call the senior center to register. Grandparents raising grandchildren, that's going to be on Tuesday, February 28 at 10:30 AM. Grandparents or relatives who are raising a grandchild, niece, nephew are welcome to join the support group to talk about resources, ideas, and challenges regarding, you know, raising, raising grandkids. Help for veterans. Eric Vickers, a veteran service officer from the Connecticut Department of Veterans Affairs, will be at the senior center on Monday, on March 1. He is available by appointment only. And if you'd like to make an appointment to speak to Mr. Vickers, you can call him at There is going to be a Chinese buffet luncheon on Thursday, March 2 at 11:30 AM. The cost is $14. And the event is to celebrate the Year of the Rabbit and to listen to guest speaker Jimmy Niao discuss Chinese culture and the Zodiac calendar system. And you can do that all while enjoying a Chinese buffet lunch. And my last update is on the ARPA Smart Driver class. This is on Thursday, March 15 from 12:30 PM to 4:30 PM. The cost is $20 for ARPA members, AARP members, sorry. Have I been saying ARPA the entire time?
Yes, you have.
AARP members.
He's not old enough to know.
I'm not old enough to know what AARP is. AARP Smart Driving Class. You could learn valuable lessons about defensive driving strategies and provide a refresher for the rules of the road. And if you participate, you may be qualified for auto insurance discount for completing the course. That's all I have.
That's good.
Okay. Well, thank you both for your reports. Does anybody have any comments or questions for either Michael or Andy's report tonight?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move on. Madam Chair. Thank you both. Yes.
Before public comments, I'd like to request-
It's cool in this room, it's very small, but if anyone needs to, does anyone need water? It is getting warm in here.
It's getting warm. There's a request to take a five-minute break before we begin public comments. Some may have a motion for recess. Five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute recess, everybody. We're going to resume the rest of our meeting, please. We have some more items that we have to take care of.
I can't get a good grip.
If everybody will have a seat. Thank you so much.
Wow, that's awesome.
All right. We are now in the public comment section of our meeting during this time. We welcome the public to come to the podium. We'll have the mic turned on for you. Please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
Hi, Rebecca Martinez, 8 Irving Street. I'd like to back up a step and discuss how we got to this point. How did this new alternative plan for MSP renovation even become the discussion? As far as the public was concerned, last year, members Tompkins, Rocco, Catanzaro, and Pagliisi voted against Superintendent LaPage applying for the renovate like new project and stopped us from voting on this. The council then received many emails from the community stating their disappointment that Superintendent LaPage was not allowed to apply and that we were not allowed to vote on such an important decision that impacts the entire community. How many letters did the town council receive supporting the decision to not allow the community to renovate like new? We know that we are in good shape with our debt service line and can absorb this project. We know that we would get over $35 million in grants if the town council allowed Superintendent LaPage to apply for this grant and it was approved. We know that by making $10 million in repairs to MSP, that makes the renovate like new project nearly impossible to apply and get approved. There are going to be times where the members of the community will not agree with the town council, but we expect that you consider each decision carefully and to be transparent and public with your deliberations. The public should know why tonight's presentation was on an alternative plan versus the renovate like new. The public should know where each town council member stands as far as the renovate like new and if you would disagree with it, what your reasons are. So I'm asking all of you individually tonight, do you think the community should have the right to vote on a renovate like new project? And if not, why? Thank you.
Okay. Can I hold your applause till the end, please? I appreciate your consideration while the speakers are at the podium. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? Anybody else? No? We have time.
Lou, Lou wants to speak. Lou raised his hand. Lou raised his hand. Lou.
There's someone else.
Hi.
Hello.
Alexandra Jackson, Chimalaki, 25, James Place. Good evening, council members. I am a kindergarten teacher at Taffeland School and have been for the past 15 years, as well as a parent of two Taffeland Elementary students. I grew up with my father, the late Robert Jackson, as a town manager in Claremont, New Hampshire, and then here in Plainville. I spent many nights here at council meetings growing up. And my sister and I would love to sit in your chairs and pound that gavel and pretend that we were on town council. I remember my friends saying to my dad that it was so cool that he was the boss of the whole town. He would quickly would correct them and explain to them that that wouldn't be fair. He is only one person and one person shouldn't make the decisions for the town. He would then go into an explanation of how you all get elected. He always made a point to explain that council members have a very important job. They need to make sure that they are always thinking and representing all of the residents, and that is a lot of people. This brings me to why I'm here tonight. I'm not going to go into the many reasons why you should allow Mr. LaPage to apply for the like-new renovation, as that list is too long and I only have three minutes. I'm here tonight to remind you of your role and responsibility to the residents and more importantly, children of this beautiful town. I ask that you put your past personal decision from June aside and remember that you are here to represent all of the residents. Therefore, since you have the power to let all of the residents vote on this renovation, then I am urging you to do that. That is why you're elected in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Hi, Crystal Seer, 37 Woodland Street. I am a parent of four. I put two kids through middle school and I'm on to the two others that are due to start in two and five years. I would like you to consider the like-new because I went to the middle school when it was new. And I'm here in Plainville, I bought a house, I'm a taxpayer, and I would like to have the opportunity to vote for a like-new project. I am concerned about the air quality, not only for the drains that were mentioned, but the, you know, has their testing been done on the air quality? What is this chemical or scent that's coming from, you know, the cabinetry? Has that been addressed from an air quality perspective? As a project management coordinator and associate director now for 11 years at United Healthcare, we do, when we look at approving big budgets, we look at quantitative and qualitative. If I were working in those conditions and my children are going to be a part of those conditions with it being the smell and potential mold growth of roof issues and water issues, I'm going to be concerned for my children, but I would be also concerned from a qualitative perspective for us losing quality teachers that have worked for the middle school. They already have a big job to fill. I can't imagine working in a middle school with all of the hormones and things that they are exposed to. But also, we shouldn't be considering losing those quality teachers if they have to constantly be subject to scents and mold and dripping roofs. So we should be considering those things as well as recruitment and rehiring and things like that. So I just want to urge us, me as a parent and taxpayer, that I would like to also have an opportunity to vote on this.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Does anybody else wish to speak?
Justin in Kababik, 22 Great Plains Drive. In 2006, you guys renovated Tomlinson Middle, Tomlinson, sorry, Toffolone, mixing things up. I'm a licensed mechanical engineer in the state of Connecticut. I've done a lot of school projects, and I get them mixed up, sorry. I was involved in Toffolone. I did the design for the HVC system. And I also helped out with the high school. I did a lot of school projects in that time. And shortly after that, we had, my wife and I had to decide where we're going to move to. And the, the thought that Plainville had put into the schools at that time impressed me because enough so that I felt moving to Plainville and putting my kids for the Plainville schools was a good decision because the town always had the right approach. And the right approach was not cutting corners, was doing the right stuff. And some of the school projects I had worked on, corners were cut, things were done to meet a certain budget, knowing that in 10 years, you'd have to do it all over again. So I would urge you to consider that when considering this. And please allow it to go to the rest of the town for a referendum. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Frangos?
I'd like to start off with what I'm kind of perplexed about. We're talking about funding for rebuilding the school. And we had a prior, the last town council meeting, this was discussed, of course. The same subjects popped up again today, and it really has me perplexed, and I'm looking for an answer. All these people here, parents especially, are sitting here hearing that we have smelly rooms. I have not heard anybody ever come to this town council meeting presenting that fact until all of a sudden, we're trying to get money for a project. Not a word. Door repairs, same scenario. Nobody's heard anything about it. All of a sudden, somebody says, "We need money." Oh, guess what's broken? So I'm a little confused about that part of the story. And by the way, an add to that is smelly rooms. I'm not a construction person, but you're going to tell me that we don't have people or can hire people that can at least look into smelly room projects? Or are we sending teachers and kids into a building knowing it stinks? I just find that odd. Very odd. But that's Louie. Okay. Number two is, and I just learned this, I get kind of confused on this, and I'm referring back to the Old Wheeler School. The only way Wheeler School could be done was with state contribution. Now what I'm hearing is you don't have to get the full state contribution, you could ask for portions of for a project? In other words, negotiable? No helping with that?
I'm not sure, Lou, what you're asking. Can, say that again. Are you talking about?
Reimbursement.
Okay. So the state does provide reimbursement for school building projects, and it's been estimated that the middle school project would be probably reimbursed at around 60%, but we will not know the answer to that until the entire project is completed. And it has to be certain items that are allowed to be reimbursed under any school building project. Not everything is reimbursable. Not everything.
I understand. Okay.
You can keep going because I talked to you some of your time.
And this was presented to Mr. Zerko. I thought Mr. Zerko came up with an excellent point. A building committee. A bunch of people like us sitting in a room are not going to be able to decide whether to build something this way or build it that way. And the prior, I think it was Wheeler, we had a building committee.
Right.
And I would think that'd be the right way to go. I would think, in fact, that was, that would solve everybody's problems. So if I had a complaint, too bad, Louie, the committee looked at it. Otherwise, they'd come in and say, "Yeah, a good idea, Louie." The point being, it's not everybody wants this, everybody wants that. And then you can get a true fact on it.
Can I just say, I appreciate you acknowledging the fact, because you and I got into it a little bit at the last meeting, but, you know.
Everybody has a difference.
The Capitol Project Building Committee, they did look at this, and their recommendation to the council was to renovate like new. And that's when we voted in June, that recommendation was turned down three to four, so to speak.
Well, on the same lead.
So they have looked at this.
My own thought process is if I'm, let's just put a fact, if I'm pro for it, what am I going to say? Do this, do that, do this. If I'm against it, I'm going to naturally fight this tooth and nail. You put a committee of people together, and once it all starts coming out and they start laying it out, you get a better understanding exactly what we're dealing with.
We had that. And we voted no.
Well, that I didn't know. I'm happy.
Well, now you do. I mean, it's a great, you know, I agree with what you said.
Oh, and I was writing, there were so many things going on here, I couldn't keep up. Okay. My concern would be, if anything else, the impact because of the times of what they are. What would be the impact on, we're getting, we'd be getting money from the state, but what is, what would, shooting from the hip, what would be the impact on taxpayers in the town of Plainville?
The annual dollar impact?
You can't, you're not going to give me any.
Yeah.
A percent increase or?
We have a debt management fund that the town council funds in every budget year, which helps pay for some of these projects. Until we have a final number on everything, I can't really tell you that.
Okay.
The number that we were giving, given last June, could be different than it is today. So.
Okay.
I can't, I don't have that information to give to you.
I understand.
Yep.
If I can conclude, it's, as I mentioned at the last meeting, all right, I'm for the kids. I was fortunate, when I grew up, taxpayers paid for my education, and I expect to do the same for the kids in this. But I also look at it from a justifiable standpoint.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Roberta, you'll be next.
Becky Tyrell, 174 West Main Street. This is going to sound a little odd from a 22-year Board of Education member, but the first thing I wanted to talk to you about was the Conservation Commission proposal. And because my daughter's on the Conservation Commission, and I've heard all this like around 75 times, so I just feel like the conversation you just had about the proposal missed a few pieces. So I'm going to ask if you get a few minutes to read over the letter from Marge Burris and just what their, what their take was on it, because I just briefly looked at it again, and it looked pretty clear to me. So I don't want to, you know, get into their project, but I did want to mention that. While I'm up here, of course, you know, what I have to talk about. So this is, you know, the gentleman that spoke earlier about the quality of the, of the work that's been done in town, you know, this goes way back to the beginning of the Long Range Plan. I keep talking about it. And the final part of the Long Range Plan was always going to be the middle school because when we started the Long Range Plan, the middle school was new-ish, new-ish. And, you know, we've reached that point in time where it's time to take a look at that building. And knowing full and well the entire time that it was going to be at the end of the list, and there were going to be some things that would have to get put to the side and waited for, and, you know, not, not to do things that would make people uncomfortable in their work or do anything that was unsafe for anybody, but just it was going to be at the end of the line. And, and that's where we are now. As a taxpayer, I know that the best way that we do this project is, is to renovate like new, because we're not going to get that kind of complete job done, and we're going to have to keep going back at it, and we're not going to get the reimbursement rate. So from a Board of Education perspective, I ask you to reconsider. From a taxpayer perspective, I ask you to reconsider. And I also ask you, when is the last time you saw this many people out consistently? And you've gotten a lot of letters and a lot of support for people just asking for one thing, and that's the ability to vote on this project. This is not, we're not asking the council to spend this money, we're asking for the ability to vote on the project. Thank you.
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. Through you, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for our town manager, please, for clarification.
Go ahead.
You, thank you. You alluded to the Conservation Commission request. This group, as you all know, is advisory. I'm a bit confused. I felt like there was a little bit of skirting and fluff going on because what's in the minutes and what was said tonight are two totally different things. As an individual that lives on Perrin Road, I have a right to know what's going on. So I'm asking you, what is going on? Why is what you said tonight different than what was in the minutes? I can read them for you. I have them up. That would help. You have, it talks about here that this advisory commission is asking, strongly supporting that this trail go down Perrin Road through the trail, the nature park, that way. So what is the real story here? Because as a resident of this town, as a voter, as a taxpayer, I want to make it very clear for Cindy that I oppose any trail or alignment that is going to impact Perrin Road. It was made very clear to us long ago that this trail would not be going down a quiet, dead-end street. So why are we getting something totally different tonight? Please, I very much want to understand.
Sure. That's nothing inconsistent with what I said in the minutes. I did not talk about Perrin Road.
Right.
The committee member, commission members talked about it and put it in their letter, but that's a nonstarter.
Okay. Because I don't have the letter. I only have the minutes.
Okay.
So that's, that's where, that's why I'd like to get clarification, please.
Sure. And the council does have that letter. And that, I did not speak at the, at the commission level at, at that time about Perrin Road because essentially, the town planner had, had explained that that just is a nonstarter. That's just not going to happen. And that was left at that. So I didn't need to comment on the record for, for that, nor do I need to comment here for the council.
Okay. I just, but you understand my confusion if you look at the minute, if you look at the minutes.
Yeah.
That I'm sure any town resident would, would be concerned about.
It doesn't say that. It says it was one of the options that they said.
Right.
They presented two options, and it was one of the options, but it, no one ever said that that's what, what was going to happen.
But it also says on here that the commission was strongly with option one. And they also expressed concerns because they have not been in the loop with anything. We on Perrin Road haven't been on the loop with anything, so nobody knows what's really going on.
Nothing's happening on Perrin Road in terms of the trail. That has been decided at least two years ago, if not longer, that Perrin Road is not part of the plan. Whatever has been brought up by other commissions is something that perhaps they were unaware of, that that option is not going to happen.
Okay.
And we could, we could have clearly, you know, cleared that up for you, Roberta, without the upset.
No, I'm just trying to understand, like I said, that.
Yeah. No, Perrin Road is not going to be part of the trail.
Okay.
It's out.
Thank you very much for your time.
Of course. You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, Cassandra Clark, 39 Pierce Street, Plainville. So I had, wanted to just take a moment to say that I, as part of the board, we did pass initially the Renovate Like New project unanimously. And as I understand it, at the end of the day, the estimated amount the town would be responsible for on the Renovate Like New project is approximately $24 million, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That was the last estimate we've been given.
All right. So being new, just, everybody knows I'm new to the board, and seeing these big numbers is very intimidating. But I also wanted to put it into a different perspective that the 2021, 2022 superintendent's budget for salary was $25 million. So when you put things into perspective, it was hard for me to kind of wrap my mind around things a little bit that you're getting, to be careful about how we use our money, yes. And I know that salaries need to be paid every year. The salary went up because of, you know, every year the salaries go up, but those numbers are so big, sometimes it's hard to understand them. But to see that that's the salary for the school for a year, and you can take that same money and basically fix the whole school, I just wanted to maybe bounce that back to you guys in that light to say that I understand why the townspeople want to have an opportunity to vote on the referendum. I'm not saying the referendum will go forward because we are on times that are horrible. I mean, eggs are, you know, five bucks, you know, a dozen. I mean, so it may not pass, but I guess when I'm thinking about big numbers and I see that number, it just puts things in a different perspective. So that's all I wanted to say.
Right. And, and as I said earlier, we're going to ask the, our finance director to tell us exactly how much $24 million bond is going to cost the town and how much a $10 million bond is going to cost the town for 20 years. He's going to be helping us with that. So we'll have more information, certainly. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? You've all been very patient tonight. This has been a long evening for all of you who came at the beginning. One more time, does anybody else have a comment for tonight? No?
Madam Chair, could I just clarify one point?
Sure.
Just, you know, we're talking about this proposal, and I, I think, we just need to be clear that, you know, like I said before, trying to compare apples to apples, this proposal we saw tonight represents 25% of what needs to be done at the middle school. So even if we take just that $10 million, that's not the entirety of the project, or it shouldn't be the entirety of the project. You know, if we're, if we're doing this the right way, you know, and then that was my point to the town manager, that when the finance director does look at this, that he incorporate a complete picture of the project, not just the first 25%.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And before we close, the town council received some emails that the folks wish to have acknowledged. I am not going to read all of them because some of them are quite lengthy, but I will tell you who wrote them. Marie Clark, Christopher Clark, Michael Luntta, I'm not sure how to say that, Lunta, Lunta, Carrie Rancourt, and Mary Couture. So these will be included in our minutes of the, of our meeting tonight. Our town clerk has been kind enough to scan the last meeting emails in. They're part of our record, and these will be also included as, as part of our meeting minutes. If anybody's interested, they'll be available in the minutes of this meeting, and they will be online for you to review if you wish to do so. If there are no other speakers wishing to speak tonight, I'm going to close the public comment section. Thank you all for your, your respectful and thoughtful comments tonight. They are appreciated. We will not be taking any action on anything to do with the middle school tonight. There's nothing, there's no action items. This is merely to get some more input, and we appreciate you coming. And certainly, Superintendent Lapage, thank you for coming tonight to give us the presentation that you did. Okay. Going to move along under our new business items. May I have a motion for the first item, please?
Madam.
Well, we could, we're going to wait a minute until everybody is comfortable again.
Everybody wants to wait for the fun stuff?
See, I should have bet.
It will be.
It will be.
Maybe 10 o'clock, right before 10.
My God, you were right.
Yeah, I'm telling you. Not my first rodeo.
It's not.
No?
No.
I've been around the block a few times.
You heard it from her personally.
That's right.
All right. All right, we'll get back to, we'll get back to the rest of our business that we have to take care of. We have a few new business items. May I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to authorize the town manager to solicit bids for the Honor Heights sanitary sewer extent, extension project.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town manager to execute the lease agreement with Roman Urbina for the use of town-owned property in White Oak, on White Oak Avenue and Woodford Avenue Extension for a food service truck.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the EDA revolving loan lending cap from $40,000 to $50,000 as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2023-20 Robinson Airport Administration Building Roof under the Interlocal Purchasing System, TIPS, contract number 211001 to Simon Roofing Products, Hartford, Connecticut, in the amount of $76,740.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number five.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for all that. Do we have any other items to discuss this evening? Michael, you have anything else?
No, I think I had a couple of thoughts in my head, but at the late hour, I'm going to, I'm going to push to the next.
Well, that's fine, that's fine with us. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Nope.
All right. We do not have an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.